Evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February eight.
Excuse me. You know, you show up late, you can't disrupt.
Good evening. Welcome to the February 18th meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. First item is roll call, starting my far right.
Kepiello here.
Jesse, you're here?
Alan, the president.
Also town planner, that's the Price, is with us. Next item, review and approval of the minutes from February 4th. Any questions, comments, corrections, whatever.
I move we accept the meeting minutes as written.
I'll second it.
Roll call. Okay.
Kepiello, eh?
Jesse, you're aye?
Alan, aye.
Just a aye.
Okay, now, next we have a preliminary conceptual review from Frank Boshopin. Discussion with the board on minor subdivision on 267 Pond Hill Road. Welcome. I got a foldy one, yeah, if you got a...
I assume it's the same as what...
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thanks. Just a little bit what you're gonna do, what the plan is. I mean, we can see what the plan is, but...
Yeah.
For the tape.
It's just a basic minor subdivision. One single lot that's about eight acres, just looking to subdivide one additional lot to that. There's an existing farmhouse on the property right now, older 1800s property. The plan would be to maintain that structure, renovate it, keep approximately three acres with that original house, and then subdivide out a new five-acre lot for another single family there, sticking with the same residential zoning. We'd be looking to use the back lot ordinance, so for road frontage, you can see the 75-foot neck area brought in, so hopefully we've proposed everything within the town ordinances and there's no red flag, so try to keep it simple.
Questions? The driveway width is what?
The driveway width is proposed to be 16 feet centered in the 75-foot neck right away.
It just details stuff. It's, you know, on the drawing it says test piss data, and there's nothing, so, you know...
Yeah, they, this was put together just as a preliminary, so this is where the survey company left off, so test pits are done, subdivision's been submitted to the state as of last Friday, so there's more data to add to what we would submit for a final.
And I see it looks like two wetlands areas delineated.
Correct.
And then I see other lines going across, are those contour lines?
Yes.
Okay, they should be labeled what the elevation is, it's on, you know, somewhere. Maybe it is on the drawing, but I can't see it, my drawing's pretty small.
Yeah, they're there, but I can't read it either.
You see them?
Thankfully straightforward.
Yeah, other than that, I mean, it's just, you know, clerical stuff that should be cleaned up.
Yep, absolutely.
Other than that. And the road is a Class 5 road, right?
It is, yes, it's Pond Hill Road.
So the road's 16 feet and two feet shoulders on either side.
The driveway's the driveway.
Oh, drive, this is driveway, right.
Yeah.
I get nothing.
Me either.
I think it's...
Looks pretty straightforward.
I guess, I'm on the phone, it's pretty straightforward, but...
We always like guests, so...
Yeah, no, we've done, these are different towns, and so...
Yes, you know, this is preliminary, I see, you know, you know, big issues that need to be addressed.
Yep.
All right. So your next step, design review, you'd have to let your butters know, you know?
Yep, that was the plan. We'll be getting all that submitted.
Yeah, I talked with him, he was looking to apply for the next planning board, but he'll be back later.
Sure.
Because the next one dates, it's a mark out.
Well, good luck with the project.
No, thank you, we'll hopefully see you beginning of April.
Okay, thank you, if you have any questions, let me know.
There'll be three feet of snow on the ground, maybe, so...
I know, see if we get any more, if we need to... All right, well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, item number five, discuss discussion on Piscataqua Regional Watershed Grant and Septic Ordinances of the Communities. Hand it off to you for...
Yeah, so, um, this evening, I asked SRPC Kyle Pimental to attend. I asked him that way, if there's any questions that I can answer, that he can help answer. We're looking to partner with them for a grant opportunity of up to 25,000. After the last board meeting, it sounded like the discussion we wanted to go, and we can change it tonight as well, but at looking at doing a septic ordinance, also with stormwater regulations. We are currently, depends how you look at it, but we're currently under the MS4 regulations, but we had asked to be exempt because we only had a little bit. This was over a decade ago, so we anticipate going further, and we might have to do more, so I think this is a good opportunity for us to address those issues. And before I hand it over to Kyle, just wanted to give you a little bit of information, so thanks a lot to Joyce for helping me out and connecting with the NH Lakes. I talked with Charlie, who was with Windham. He actually helped spearheaded their septic ordinance. They just did it around their, their lake, but he explained their process through it, that they actually had the select board do it as a health regulation ordinance, so that way it has more teeth than just, I said just, but in the zoning board, that way it would have more standing. I did talk to Jamie about it, about his capacity and his role, and he supports it. We discussed, you know, obviously, just around all the lake communities. And that might be something that I'd ask. I hadn't told Kyle all this yet, so surprise Kyle, but about maybe, I'm like, how to get, help me with the data collection for notification purposes for that. There were several examples in there. Of the six examples, there's ways to enforce it, how to set it up. For example, Windham, they, they had a small working group spearheaded by two or three, three folks. He said that kind of like, the first step is to see if all the lake associations are part of, I want to say it wrong, V-LAP, which is a volunteer assessment program, and I'm not sure how many are, so that might be something that, that they, SRPC could help on if they're not already part of that program. The person in Windham said that it's strongly recommended, that way you get all the associations on board, and then that way you have a point of contact person, because right now, overall, the billing department or doesn't really have, like, a good system of contacts. And let's see, so the way that Windham did it, they, the select board really liked it, but in the end, ended up being a citizen petition, Warren article, it passed for them, and they had their septic ordinance go in effect 90 days after their town meeting. And the folks that were in that designated area had a year to come in compliance, and that's basically showing if they have a septic that's up to date, or like, they're pumping out. There's several different criteria, and if they did not communicate or ask for a waiver, then there was like recourse, like fines. And he said, right now, they are at like an 85% response rate. And what response rate is, they'd send out a first batch of letters, letting everybody know that this ordinance, or the health regulation ordinance was in effect, and they had 90 days, I mean, up to a year to respond back with that, and then after that, give plenty of time, and they would send out another batch of letters to those folks that didn't respond before they attempted for that. But, so that would be more of like a code enforcement in the end, like, being able to track that and be able to do that. But they have three guys in there now, so, four if you count Kayla. But, so they said, once the system gets set up, it's just a matter of tracking. And it said that he, you know, as we spoke before, when we were talking about the zoning ordinance stuff that Ron was working on, or spearheaded, that the board supported, that he would, he thinks that this would be a good idea as well, so...
Vanessa, do you have a sense of how many homes are on lakes here in Barrington?
Um, I don't, but I can try to get that information for you. I'm not sure, off the top of my head.
Just thinking about keeping track.
Yeah.
I have a spreadsheet and all the homes on Swain's Lake.
Oh, okay.
I'll take a look at that and get a count by.
Jack, excuse me, probably just print something up.
I know that the...
I think so, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Because, yeah, because I asked Jamie if there was an easy way for him to like pull, you know, just address on there, and he said, no, you'd have to like, like, do like a spreadsheet, like pinpoint where everybody is and that sort of thing. And that might be something we might need help just setting up initially for the building department. Well, that's awesome, that way we can check them off, right? One down.
Yeah, they're very good at community, and they do have them on.
Oh, that's awesome.
I suspect Nindons.
Mm-hmm.
There's two things, remember, the septic system's got to be in this, not just the house. That might be a little... You know, I'm pretty familiar on what it takes to modify building ordinance.
Yes.
Do you know what's involved in that?
I can, Kyle, if you don't mind, I'll put you on the spotlight, maybe you can explain a little bit more. I know usually through the select board process, that'd be through it, but Kyle's worked with several, or a few communities on, on doing regulation reviews, as well as he's familiar with how certain towns do it. Could start with a recommendation from the planning board to the select board, or something along those lines. I don't know, Kyle, if you have anything you'd like to add for that?
Sure, so I, I think I missed part of the question, because it, it cut out, so I didn't, I didn't think the beginning part was...
He's bad about speaking his microphone.
I like to lean back. The question really is, for us, we know what's required to change building ordinances, zoning ordinances, and that kind of stuff, but for town ordinances, we're not familiar with that process. And I, you know, we, I don't even have health ordinances, I mean, I know we have bug license requirements and all that kind of stuff.
Right, and Jamie's our health officer, right?
Right, so Jamie's our health officer. When I was talking with Charlie from Windham, he had mentioned that they didn't have a health department, and that falls upon the select board as, as the health board, I guess, I don't know if that, I think that's what they called it.
Yeah, I don't think, we haven't had anything like this come before, anything that would be, I don't have any experience with.
What was the community, I mean, how well, you know, how, by what margin did it pass? And was it been, I imagine there's some level of antagonism to having oversight and regulation. Do you, do you have any sense of how communities have adapted to this?
So I've only, I've only spoken to Windham at this point. When it went to town vote, it was 80, it was over 80% passed through citizen petitions. So I don't know why this select board initially had reservations about it, because when they presented before the select board, they were very receptive about it. So I can't speak for town politics, but when it went through, it passed, and like I said, he told me like 86% was like almost immediate response back from the community to be in compliance with it, so they're just around one...
Can it be Lake?
One, yeah, thank you. And for them, it was easy for them to notify everybody, because around the pond, they're all a village district, so they could easily just pull whoever's in that zoning district to notify them that way. So I know it'll be a little bit heavier lift on town of Barrington's side, because I know we wanted to look at all of the water, or all of the lakes.
But if we were to get a master plan grant, is that some of the work you would do for us, Kyle?
So in terms of the master plan work, I would say that the septic ordinance and/or the stormwater reg, depending if you want to include that, they might be recommendations that would come out of the master plan, but we probably wouldn't be able to, within the budget, do both. So I think you'd probably have to pick one or the other, but if you wanted to take a first step, and you, you think that it's, the town's not quite ready to do a septic ordinance, and you'd rather have it referenced in a master plan chapter, then we could, we could definitely do that part of it, but we probably wouldn't be able to do both, within the existing funding.
Right, so the other project that we had talked about was the land, I think we ended up calling it Land and Water Conservation Chapter, kind of a mouthful, but, but that would also suggest that these be action items to be done, as well as, I know, like, the trails system, as well as part, a component of that as well. So since they are only limited to funding, those are the two projects that shook out as like, it sounded like the top priority to kind of go forward. So I think it's kind of up to the board right now, if you want to support going forward with the prepa grant for either one of those options. And I'd ask for a letter of support tonight on behalf of that grant, and then if the board felt like doing the septic and the regulation review, I'd also ask a recommendation to the select board, just for a letter of recommendation for pursuing the grant. The grant closes, I believe, at the end of March. So it's just a matter of letter of support, help with the granting agency, so if you feel like you're ready to move forward, Kyle can probably move forward with trying to, working on the grant.
Kyle, I have a question, I mean, surface runoff, that kind of stuff, fertilizing the lawns, that is the number one cause of impact to the lakes. This is number two, probably a bad choice of words, but this is, you know, probably half the impact of that. If towns not go after that, because it's viewed as unenforceable, and it can't be policed, and this is something they can do, is that pretty much the logic behind it?
Yeah, I would say so. I think that, in my experience with working with local code enforcement officers, health officers, the managing fertilizers, the only way that you're ever going to have any enforcement that takes place is sort of a neighbor calling on a neighbor, and even then, unless you're catching that person in the act applying a fertilizer that is not allowed, it's, it's, yeah, it's virtually unenforceable. I think the, at least in my opinion, a better strategy is outreach, and just letting folks know that they don't have to load up on some of these nitrogen fertilizers, and that there are other approaches, and that there, it's actually better if you've got lessons in certain places. So I think outreach plays a larger component in actually changing people's behavior, as opposed to a regulation on, on fertilizers. Now, what I would say to that, though, and Vanessa brings up a good point in Windham of getting the HOAs involved, is that you also need help on the enforcement of a, of a septic ordinance to some extent. I mean, I think what the, the piece that makes it more enforceable is that, once you have a list of folks within whatever area you're going to regulate, you can then systematically bring everybody into compliance with those inspection schedules, and whatever, you know, a town decides, whether that's three years, five years, whatever it is. And so it's easier to track that than it would be than someone going out and putting fertilizer on their lawn at some time. So you're right, that, that's primarily why we haven't seen any real success, or any municipalities really, that I'm aware of, that have really taken on the fertilizer, you know, issue, and, and other than outreach, I haven't seen a regulation in place that has really, you know, moved the needle.
I don't think we need to do, update a chapter of the master plan, do we? I think we talk about water quality and conservation and protecting natural resources in our master plan today. If we had to do one or the other.
Is this how the, the grant money comes, is to fund a master plan, or to fund looking at regulations?
So it's to fund planning and regulatory documents that are within that watershed area, and since we fall in there, meeting with the granting agency, they, both projects could be viable. They felt like, not to push in one direction or another, but regulation and ordinance review would probably score higher than a master plan chapter, but the reason the master plan chapter also came about, because CSM Marsworth did one recently, that got funding from the same, same source, and I know I've been talking with conservation and recreation in prior year about doing like a recreation open space, but I know that recreation didn't have capacity right now to take on another project, and so then we were trying to think of another alternative for a master plan chapter, was a water and, water and land conservation master plan chapter, which would fall under the, you know, that, their ideology of what, how they want the grant to be, and then also perhaps address our trail system that we're trying to establish more of. So whereas they felt like they were both viable projects, I don't want to make a decision for you, but I would feel like that the regulation and the septic ordinance, if this is something that you feel like, I know we've been talking for the past couple of years, I think this is a good time to do it.
So thanks for clarifying, we don't have to do it under the umbrella of a master plan.
No, no, it could be a separate document, so it, that one project would be this, the septic ordinance and the regulations would probably be bundled together, just because it would, it would make a better project essentially, and then that way you can get more done. And we're not required to have much funding, and SRPC, they say they could stay within all of the grant funding, so wouldn't be a cost to the town, other than volunteer time.
So you're saying septic and stormwater regulations, like the examples you set this afternoon?
Yes, yes.
I, I, I mean, I could, want to clarify a point. I mean, I agree with you, but you said, you know, in the shoreline zone, some of the ordinances do it, the whole town. So that, I mean, to me, that's a decision to do it just for the shoreline, or do it for the whole town.
So, and speaking with the code enforcement officer, and I think I spoke a little bit with Kyle, too, but he, Jamie was more receptive of just doing it in the shoreline, overland district.
I am too, but I just want to...
That's, that's an excellent point. That's an excellent point, yeah.
From everybody's on the same page.
250 feet, right?
Yeah, I am, I'm there, but I just want to, I know some of them, some of them did the whole town.
Right, that, some of them did, yeah, you're correct.
Okay, I mean, I'm with, I, I want to limit it too, but I just think we should all agree that we were there.
Yes, yes, thank you.
There may be some low-hanging fruit, I don't know, that might apply to the whole town, but I don't know, you don't want to get into all the bookkeeping regulations of all.
Well, you could always see how successful this goes, too, and you could always amend your ordinance in the future. I mean, this is just an idea, but in the future, for townwide, if it becomes part of a issue townwide, other than just the shoreline district. But I think right now, our for, our focus is the...
Yeah, I think we're doing this because of impact on the, as we have now.
Correct.
And I guess Nipple Lake would be... Any other bodies?
Years Lake.
Years.
Everything over 10 acres, I think, is in the ordinance, so. Everything over 10 acres is in the shoreline exclusionary zone.
Anything over 10 acres is kind of our focus, yeah.
It's a great pond.
Yeah, so there's probably a few.
So we have a pond at my property, it's around 10, I'd have to look at...
So what is the cost to oversee, sorry? What is the cost, you think, to oversee all this, in terms of management of record-keeping and all of that?
You mean after this is implemented?
Yeah.
You sell funny, the financial penalties.
Yeah. Good point, good point. I don't know, it seemed like it would be a low, that it would not be like a burden on the code enforcement office. That's what you told me.
Something could be put on the property cards.
That could be it, too.
You have to track the timing of it, if you have time limits.
So...
They have a Mr. Assistant, I think that...
Yeah, so she could probably assist...
Existing duties, I think, so.
Yeah.
They don't require another headcount at all, maybe.
So like, in the example for Windham, they, he's just said, he just tracked it on, it's a simple Excel spreadsheet. That's how they did it, doesn't mean that's how we have to do it, but I don't feel like, I think, once it's set up, and then you have that year to have everybody compliance, and it's determined on how many, like, some communities have three years, some communities have five years, where they have to keep coming back in to give their receipts or what have you, so that we could work that out in the working year for it.
The majority of three, every three years.
Yeah, so after the first year, you know, you get all your letters together, and then when it comes up to the three-year mark, you send all your letters out again. So I, I think maybe the startup might be the most labor-intensive, but...
I think it would depend, too, if how proactive you're going to be about enforcing this. So if nobody ever files it, are you just going to let that go until there's an issue? Or is Jamie going to actively be reviewing and going door-to-door, hey, you don't have your septic pumped?
Yeah, if the first reporting period comes along and no one does anything, it's not, it's going to tank. No pun intended.
No pun intended.
And the other thing is, if somebody takes a year to do it, do they now have three years from that point? Or do you just make everybody do it every three or five years, so it can be done in a batch-like mode? So if you're late, you're late.
A lot of communities have experienced, we can learn.
Yeah, so for a lot of communities, this is newer for them, too, so the long-term, unless, Kyle, I don't know if you know any communities, long-term, after like three to five years, what they do, but... It's a new...
Not, not to that specifically, but I think that you're right, that it'll probably, the most part of the labor-intensive part of this will be getting it set up. But the way, I've looked at a couple of different municipalities, and how they've structured this, and whether or not someone just got their septic system pumped, and then this becomes, you know, adopted, do they have to get it, you know, done again, or are they exempt from that? You know, there, there's ways to handle those situations, and a lot of the, we would do a full review of all the different septic ordinances, and essentially, if you look at all of them, they're all circling around the same thing. It's, it's the pumping schedules and the inspections, like, that's really what all of these are circled around. And there are minor tweaks here and there, you know, from different municipalities. So we would, to get back to the, the very first question that I think was asked, was like, who would be involved in doing this? My recommendation would be a small subcommittee. I don't, because this isn't fall within zoning, and it doesn't fall within your site in subdivision regs, the full planning board may not want to be the ones steering the ship. It would maybe be a member or two from this board that is interested, and then the health officer, and probably a member or two from the selectmen, and then the planner. I think that's, and then, you know, with guiding from SRPC, it's probably going to be the, you know, the group that puts together the teeth of the, and then if we wanted to bring it back to the planning board to just give another set of eyes, so you can give your endorsement ultimately to the selectmen and then the health officer, you know, we could set it up in a way that makes sense, but I think that's probably an avenue that I would recommend in terms of setting up a committee to kind of help come up with the language.
One of the things I saw in one of the ordinances that we got, for an example that I liked, you could apply for like a waiver to go from three years to five years. If you are seasonal use only, or you're only one or two people in a system ready for four bedrooms or something like that, you could go to five years if you ask for it, and you can prove that you, you know, that you're underutilizing the system. So something like that, I thought was a good option.
I guess I wondered, though, is where's the teeth? It may be cheaper to pay the fines and actually to replace a septic system if you need to.
Well, some of them learned, they capped at $1,000, but pretty much all of them were $50 a day and up. But they capped at $1,000, so your point is, if you cap it at $1,000, you know...
It's $20,000 to do a use.
You know, I, I'm not complying, it's not like I capped at $1,000, from here on, it's, you know, it's no penalty at all.
Yeah.
So that would be an important point to hear from our consultants on how towns have addressed that, or have thought about it, at least.
I think Scott's point, if you cap it at $1,000, it makes no sense whatsoever. I mean, because then, if I'm capped at $1,000, the septic system's $20 grand.
Right, I mean, some of them referred to ours... Right, I mean, some of them referred to RSAs, so do you know, Vanessa, if, if those penalties are defined by an RSA somewhere?
Um, I'd have to look into it further.
These are probably all stuff that the grant will bring up. Well, the new RSA that took effect last September also was more concerned about when you go to sell a place.
Yeah.
Yeah, so here in Springfield, it says pursuant to RSA one forty-seven, uh, dash one, any person violating this could be subject to a fine up to a thousand dollars. And then they, they list two other RSAs, so I don't, we just have to find out.
Well, some of them were not, were a hundred dollars a day, and most of them.
But up to a thousand total, right?
No, the, so, once I looked at it, I didn't see a cap for a lot of towns. Some towns I did, but I, some towns I didn't see a cap. So it seemed to be, some did not cap at a thousand.
Right.
Whether that's for the RSA or not, I don't know, but they didn't.
But I think that's the kind of stuff of consulting.
But I mean, to me, per Scott's point, capping at a thousand dollars.
And maybe that's what the committee decides not to do a cap.
Right, yeah, I mean, I would suggest against it.
Sounds like Ron's going to be on the committee.
Yeah, it does.
You can't just sell your house to avoid this, right? Because now, you sell the house, you have to do it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think the way it's, that, that new law says the buyer has to do it, not the seller.
Yeah.
So, but it all gets negotiated.
Exactly. Yeah. Want me to pay an extra ten grand? They're going to have to lower the price of the house ten grand.
So thoughts and feelings about moving forward with this opportunity?
I think we should move forward.
Yeah.
Is there a motion? You need a motion?
Um, I just would like to have a letter of support, I'll have the chairman sign off of, as long as there's a consensus, and then, um.
Definitely, give a letter of support.
And then afterwards, amenable to forwarding to the select board, um, do that in the next meeting. That would be great, too, to ask a letter of support and let me know what things you might need, because when's your, the next meeting's the third, I think?
Yeah.
Is that right? Okay.
Because, you know, we all agree this wouldn't go in the, in our regulations, right?
Right.
Go somewhere else.
Well, the septic ordinance, and then the, um, and then to back up for the, in addition to the regulations, they would go into this subdivision and site plan regulations for the stormwater.
Okay.
So it's like we're doing two things with us.
We already have stormwater reg, I don't, I'm unclear on, I am unclear on what we are adding to our regulations. We already have requirement for pre and post runoff has to be the same, we already have that. Alteration terrain for big ones has to go for the state. I was a little unclear on what we're trying to accomplish with these new regulations. Uh, it seems to me we got them covered already, I don't think we have any complaints.
You, I mean, I looked quickly at the Rollinsford and what was the other, Milton?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if there's any difference between those, if one is more stringent than the other. It looked like, I think it was Rollinsford, had, um, ongoing surveillance, so after the project was completed, had to have some yearly reports. I sort of wondered about.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know if like.
For Jamie to track.
Kyle can maybe answer quickly for that, or just give your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so I mean, without looking at Barrington's existing stormwater regs, I don't know how they compare to the, this, this, where is it, this, um, South Beach Watershed Alliance's model that most municipalities now work on, uh, or work off of. So that model takes into account, um, higher precipitation rates, so their fifty-year storm event, the design criteria that is set for those stormwater systems might be a little bit different than what Barrington currently has on the books, again, without.
We, we have fifty, ours is currently fifty.
Fifty years, okay. Um, the other thing that the, um, that the model does look at are, are things like, you know, there's options for, um, or different standards for redevelopment versus in, uh, new development to offer some additional flexibility. There is maintenance, um, that, that gets part of, if it's a site plan or subdivision, there will be maintenance that gets recorded as part of that subdivision that, that puts that, um, on these, uh, the, sort of the applicant and the, um, the project, that they have to maintain that, and it's put right into the registry of deeds. Um, so things like that, some inspection and maintenance responsibilities that get broken down that, again, without looking at your regs, and if you already have that, then maybe it's not necessary, but the model does provide ways in which a community could sort of bolster their, their stormwater regs if, if needed.
Maybe look at it, but I don't know.
Once again, there's no cost to us.
So we'll be just reviewing our regulations to see if.
Instead, get, um, state of the art. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we could probably strengthen our language, probably.
Mm-hmm.
So, so, that twenty-five thousand dollar grant, we're looking to do both of them?
To do the septic ordinance and the regulation, stormwater, storm regulation, for subdivision and site plan.
And that twenty-five will cover both? Because that's where I would say, I'd want the focus to be the septic.
Yes.
And then if there's anything left, you want to do a review, great.
Yeah, I relayed that to Kyle, that our, um, first interest is the septic ordinance, um, and getting all of that, the data set up and whatever we need to do to help facilitate through that process through the select board. Um, and then you said it, it's a perfect coupling with the regulations as well, because, um, it would just make sure that we're all up to that standard. Because it's like essentially a template of what, um, the communities have, and if we already have it, then that's great. Um, like I said, it's not costing us anything, and we're also getting, um, yeah.
Kyle, I have a question for you, it sounds like the board has more interest in the septic and stormwater regulations. The land and conservation, are those types of grants generally available? Is that something we could look at in future years?
I think so, um, so I, I think that, you know, the PREPA grants have been, now, we don't really know how they're going to be in the future, um, you know, there, there have certainly been some uncertainty for some of these funding sources, but the PREPA grants have been relatively consistent, I would say, over the last five years or so, and having an amount anywhere between five and twenty-five thousand per round. Um, so if this funding source would be around next year or the year after, I think that that master plan makes a great application. Uh, the other thing that the planning commission can always do is keep their eyes out for other funding sources that, that may help with a master plan chapter. Um, it doesn't always have to be PREPA, there are tons of other grants that we could do. Um, you know, if we could tie it to, I guess, I'll, I'll use, um, New Mar, our New Market as an example. We did an open space chapter for, for New Market, um, and looked at improving, uh, areas that were for groundwater recharge within areas that could be permanently protected. Like, so we were able to kind of make the case that this open space plan would actually be looking to improve groundwater protection through permanently conserving land, and DES saw that as a good connection. Now, that open space plan was also looking at other areas too. They were looking at connecting open space to existing trail systems and so on and so forth. So, you know, sometimes it takes a little bit of creative grant writing to find a way to get what the municipality is looking for. So we can always keep our eyes open for other options if PREPA is not going to be around next year or the year after. We can always sort of try and find something that would work.
Thank you, but trail connectivity has been a, a real interest of mine, and right now we are, are working with, uh, UNH Downtown and Trails, um, through extension, uh, but they're only going to focus on a certain trail. Uh, we had our first meeting, and of course, we had lots of ideas, and they kept trying to bound us and say, we have this much time and energy to devote to. So it's good to know there might be some options in the future if we need it.
Trail, by the way.
Haven't decided yet, but mostly probably the thirteen acres, something there, but we talked about a lot of things.
It was like economic development and trails, so they're trying out like for the downtown area.
Oh, okay.
For town center area, I'm sorry.
That's something that we can do ourselves.
I mean, maybe, and, and they said, um, UNH cooperative said they're hoping to, um, build capacity within town to be able to do more of this after finish their six-month project.
Okay, probably just looks good.
Yeah.
Want to write a letter, Ms. Chairman?
I thought that was.
Are we making a motion to write a letter? Did we all agree on that?
We agreed, yeah.
I'm okay with agreement.
Okay.
I just want to sign off on it, and then, um, I'll work with, I'll let Connor know, and then work with Joyce too for the select boards.
Get the wording.
For letter support.
So by next meeting, you'll have something to look at.
Uh, I'm going to email it to you tomorrow.
Oh. Well, that's fast.
Or this week, I'll say this week, maybe not.
The letter she's going to, you're going to send to her, she's going to send to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Make sure that you agree with it, and then.
Sounds like a deal.
Okay.
I just want to thank, um, Kyle, thank you for coming tonight, and, um, it looks like that we're going to move forward with, um, the septic system and the regulation review, and, um, I can get together with you further on what you need, um, for that.
So, so it wa, yeah, just to clarify, so it was the septic ordinance and the stormwater review on both sites and subs, was that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, please.
And again, thank you for accommodating my schedule too. I have, uh, an almost two-year-old, which this is a time of night that usually we need two, two sets of hands to help, so I appreciate, uh, being able to do this, uh, here.
Good, great, thank you.
We appreciate you.
I know, you want to get out of the house, right? We don't know about your strategy, Kyle.
Successful parenting.
Thank you.
I don't, I.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. I didn't, I don't know if there's any other business, but.
Yeah, I was going to ask, anybody before we adjourn?
We just have one motion to adjourn.
Okay.
You always do that.
All right, we'll have a motion by Bob, anybody wants a second?
I'll second that, so call.
Captain Loi.
Jesse, you're on?
All right.
All right, thank you all for being here. Yeah, didn't do too bad.